Good evening, everyone. I call to order the March 21 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Our broadcast this evening should be ADA compliant via BlueJeans in offering transcription and translation services, and there should be or have been a link where you can access online any of the documents that we'll be viewing this evening. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. We're going to start this evening with a very quick update on a couple of things. First, I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver to make one adjustment to our meeting agenda this evening.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. And so now I need a motion to add one additional resolution under item I of our agenda this evening. This is a resolution approving a contract of employment for Superintendent Irenetta Wright.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Thank you very much. So we're going to move to item B on our agenda, which are the new set of board priorities that will span from now until June 13th. For people who are looking at the documents on the agenda, you'll see those printed there. And if you flip to the third page, you will see a more detailed version here for anyone who would like to take a look. But we decided back on March 7th that there are four most important things for this board over the next three months. One is ensuring that the new superintendent has a strong start in the district. The second is supporting the passage of a strong FY '23 budget. Third is support the adoption of a strong transportation plan for next school year. And then the last is to begin a coaching series on effective board governance. So my hope for these meetings is that you start to see ever more of our time aligned to those priorities, and we'll be coming back at our next meeting with an update on how we're doing. We hope to see at least 50% of our time over the course of these three months align to those most important priorities. So, any questions so far? We're now going to move into Hearing of the Public, which is at its new place on the agenda, where we're trying to do it first. Each speaker will have two minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. These are for our online speakers. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow the protocol, we do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners, and thank you. Do we have any folks who are here in person to speak tonight? Seeing none, I will ask our wonderful staff how many people we have online.
President Lindy, we have two people speaking this evening. We have first Ruth DeBono, followed by Ms. Parish, Anita Parish.
Great, thanks, Rob.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I am a student at Walnut Hills High School. I'm a senior, and I am here again on behalf of the Young Activism Coalition to talk about school discipline and police officers in our schools. So first and foremost, restorative, you know, our goal, we want to remove police officers from our schools, but we also know that the most important, it's the most important that we do that at the same time as, you know, implementing restorative and transformative justice policies. And these, a lot of, this is something that he will talk about a lot, but a lot of people don't really know what restorative and transformative justice is, or how it can really be achieved. And so it's important to note that implementing restorative justice, it's an entire system of how we discipline our children and how they're being treated in schools, and it relies on eventually the removal of punitive discipline with the use of things such as suspensions and expulsions and insul suspensions and all of those types of things that are punishing our students and punishing the person who does something wrong rather than, you know, helping the person who was hurt by whatever happened and like rebuilding the school community and helping create, people learn from their mistakes and creating an environment to do better, not just learn what they're doing wrong. Additionally, restorative and transformative justice cannot be achieved with police in schools. That is completely counterintuitive to the goal of restorative and transformative justice, and it creates an environment where students are not in a position to learn from their mistakes and grow, but are being policed and punished within their own schools, which is the place where they should be, in a safe and comfortable learning environment. Additionally, the use of punitive discipline and SROs disproportionately affects our Black and Brown students, as well as disabled students and other students who might be in marginalized groups, and it's very harmful to continue using these practices in their schools. I think that we, the CPS has a really good opportunity to create safer and more anti-racist schools, and so they should be doing, we should be doing this by removing SROs from our schools and make a difference, not just something that, you know, you use the name for it, but it won't actually make any difference.
Thank you very much. We're ready for our next speaker.
Anita Parish.
My name's Anita Parish, and I'm a parent of two Walnut Hills High School students, and I support removing police from Cincinnati Public Schools and implementing real restorative justice. Other districts across the country have implemented restorative justice, places such as Buffalo, New York, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and school districts that have implemented the restorative justice practices have, all have at least one restorative justice coordinator who's employed by the district, who works to oversee the program, and is, and the programs are facilitated by coaches who run the day, or facilitators who run the day-to-day restorative justice programs. While Cincinnati Public Schools has begun implementing some restorative justice practices, I ask that CPS implement a real, effective, evidence-based, restorative justice program, and along with that, remove police officers from the schools and move from a punitive-based program to a program that values everyone in the community and really works to not leave our students behind and to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline in a way that is consistent with CPS's pledge to move towards racial equity and to use evidence-based practices. I recently started a group called Counselors Not Cops to support, to gather people together to support moving CPS in this direction, and I look forward to seeing.
Thank you, Ms. Parish.
Carry that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That's probably the fewest number of speakers I can remember since being on the school board. Rob, we're sure there's nobody else. Okay, we're not excluding anybody. Okay, so we're going to keep moving then to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from special meeting February 28th, business meeting February 28th, special meeting March 7th, business meeting March 7th.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved as presented. Moving now to committee reports, we're going to hear an update from the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee from Committee Chair Jones.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to present for the board's approval the Friday, March 4, 2022 minutes of the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee. We started off with a benchmarking update from our Interim Director of Performance Accountability and Testing. These benchmark updates are used to inform and support CPS's accelerated learning plan, and the assessments include the MAP growth piece, the I-Ready assessments, and the, what we know, or what I know, is the DIBELS report. They are reported to Student Achievement in the fall, winter, and spring, and I already said it's used to inform instruction and support. On the second page, you will see some of the information relating to that report. Some of the other data that was presented, the specific data included reading testing, and in the minutes, and our, our audience can also get access to these minutes on our website, but you will see some of the, the data, the specific data. And I do want to add that although the data was presented to us, we recognize that, of course, where we had, we did demonstrate progress in certain areas of the data and the tests, but we also still recognize that COVID is still playing a big part in the learning gaps that we have experienced in, with our students. We also had a report on the Every Child Reads program, and that report was actually presented to the full board on 3/16, so there was also a ton of data elements that were included in that. We received an update on the world languages situation. We had a young lady, I'm gonna, let's see, her name was Sina, I believe. She was a 2021 Walnut Hills graduate who was speaking to us virtually from Spain, and she was, had no experience with Spanish until she started taking classes in her sophomore year. Very proud of her, so she worked her way up to advanced placement Spanish. So she presented to us as a way to inform the committee about how valuable that experience was for her, so we were very pleased to hear that. The report included information about kind of where the languages are being offered across the district, and I wanted to make sure, let's see, there are 10 languages offered throughout the district, and we are looking to grow that opportunity throughout the district, so we look forward to hearing more about that. Let's see, another presentation on the career pathways from Mr. Turner. We, we are, we were informed that there is a guide that has been finalized and distributed, and I don't know if board members received the Career Tech Guide, but if not, we need to make sure that board members get a copy of the new guide that will, that has information about the range of career technical and career pathway opportunities for our students. We, it was also presented that we intend to continue to grow the career pathways and the career technical options for our students. We did have a considerable discussion about some of the areas where we were lacking, particularly as it relates to the graduation rates and how we might improve our graduation rates by doing more work with the career pathways piece. So Mr. Turner did offer us some information and data about the graduation rates for Career Tech students. That's also included in, in the minutes. And then finally, we got a report from, regarding the graduation progress, and it was reported that we, we have, we are expected to graduate from the, we are accountable to the Ohio State Report Card on our graduation numbers, and to be honest, we are below that, but the staff shared with us the options that they were using to help our, get to increase the numbers that we anticipate to graduate, and it is our hope, and we will continue to monitor and track those numbers. And I just wanted to sum that up, to be clear about it, that we were not happy about the numbers and where we are right now, but we are expecting these numbers that you see in your minutes to be different, so we look forward to, to hearing more about that. The final draft of the committee work plan, you all received the final draft with the question of whether you are not, there were any comments around the red line efforts? We did not get any, so that is also, we want to also include that as part of our recommendation for approval, that we approve our work plan for this year. Other business, Employee Appreciation Day. Committee member Mr. Craig acknowledged CPS employees for the work that they do in keeping the district running, and we had one, we had a person from Hearing of the Public who presented information, that was Kinder Phelps, to discuss the Testing Review Committee and the work that they are doing to impact testing, what the impact of testing is on instructional time and student motivation. So that completes my report. Again, you will find the, the report online, and just one addition to that is that our regularly scheduled meeting is being rescheduled a week later because of spring break, and we don't have a quorum because my two other colleagues are gonna be out of town, and they're not taking me with them. Okay. All right. So I, that's the issue. So I present the report as written.
Thank you very much, Chair and Vice President Jones. Do board members have any questions about the Student Achievement Committee?
I have a question for you all. With regards to the graduation rate, were you, were you satisfied with their plan for increasing the, with, I'm looking at the numbers, just, were you all satisfied with the plan?
I, I am satisfied with the plan, but that satisfaction only goes as far as the numbers go up. So I, I think we have some work to do. I was very pleased to hear that they had some very concrete steps in place, including, including one-on-one kinds of efforts with the kids. First of all, we gotta, we're meeting with them, we're going to their homes, you know, we're doing a lot of that kind of thing to make sure that we are connecting, but the bigger conversation is, I think, what can we do earlier, you know, identifying kids earlier and how we approach that. So there's still a lot of work to be done in that area.
Other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Not a question. Thanks for the, for the minutes, but again, regarding graduation rates and also some of the stuff that we saw at the committee of the whole regarding our scores in the 10th grade particularly. Again, I'll do my two cents worth again for the need, especially in our Title I high schools or success centers modeled after what they've been doing at Walnut. I think it's crucial and essential, but I just want to, every chance I get, I want to mention that. Thank you.
All right. We can move then to the Committee of the Whole, and I am happy to share that committee report unless there's somebody else who would like to do that. Brandon's nodding his head, yes, no, okay, not, not, okay. I'll be very brief about this. So we have a Committee of the Whole meeting for March 16th. We discussed, first, I think, a wonderful update on the transportation plan that is coming together for next year, that ranges from meetings with SORTA to an optimization study of our routes to a search for a Transportation Director. And I think we're very excited about the work the administration is doing, and just can't say again how grateful we are and how important that work is. So thank you. And then we also had a second presentation from a wonderful team of staff members on a host of different academic and social emotional learning issues. And if I had to summarize, I think the headlines from that report, I think it was that there's both real progress that people should feel very proud of, and all kinds of work that we want to continue to do to make sure that all kids have access to the kind of education we hope for them. But I think reflected the tireless work of many, 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 many people in CPS on behalf of kids over the course of the last year. The full report is available in hard copy here and in soft copy online. Do any board members have anything they'd like to add or feel is missing? Okay, so if that sounds good, that is the committee report for Committee of the Whole. Do I have a motion to accept the committee reports?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the committee reports are approved as presented. Moving right along, we are now on announcements. I know that Dr. Moffett has some announcements she would like to share. Would you like to go first?
Sure. Sure. So Rob has created a presentation, although it wasn't meant to be a presentation, just to put the pictures up there so you all can see. So we had the opportunity to support, go back to the first one, Rob, to support our fellow board member and one that was missing in action, but they both, Eve Bolton and, Board Member Eve Bolton and Board Member Carolyn Jones received awards, and Mary and I had an opportunity to go up and support them, so this is just a picture. Mary made us cross her legs, do a right cross, so congratulations to them. Board Member Bolton got out of that, but she has, was it 15 years of service? 15 years of service, and Board Member Jones has 10. Was it one? Okay. Okay. 15, see, see how they are, 15 and 10, 10 years. So congratulations. The next picture I wanted to show you all is to celeb, no, go back to one more, to celebrate TAFT for their state championship. Woo! The picture's set. Got on our, we're, we're modeling our TAFT shirts. They gave us TAFT shirts when we went to visit, so we're sporting green and gold today. And the last one, I think my board members will absolutely appreciate. I had an opportunity to go to the Brain Bowl that was here, and these young people were sitting in our seats, and it was so cool how, they, they were so excited. They kept playing with the mics, and they were answering questions, they had little clickers, but they were super, super excited, and I went up to one of them, I was like, oh, future board member. He was like, yeah. So I thought this would be really, really cute, but the Brain, the Brain Bowl was excellent. I wanted to say congratulations to everybody that participated in that, and let you all know that I think we're getting some challenges for our seats up here. So that's it. That's all my announcements.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moffett. I did choose my green tie today in honor of TAFT senators, so congratulations to our state champions. Any other kudos from board members? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you very much. Kudos to the staff and folks that visited us at Woodward on Saturday for the Teachers' Job Fair. Had a wonderful turnout, especially with all the things thinking and happening nationally about teachers, you know, the decline and, and the people leaving. We saw some great people and appreciated all the, the school staff showing up and being able to do what they need to do to recruit the very best for our kids, so I was very impressed with it. And again, Woodward is starting to become our flagship for community events. Also, I have a little bit of an announcement, it's on the 24th, and that is a tour of Gamble-Montessori High School, because they are doing a wonderful tour of the, of the campus with four or five major stations for learning that are part of the CPS outside program and also through Green Umbrella, and it's the 24th. After the tour, it, there is an appearance too at a very well-known West Side Happy Place, and so I won't talk about it, but there is a social aspect to this tour as well as an outdoor one, and you can all imagine, they talk about something, drinks, green drinks, but it's a little past, think past, but that's the 24th, and then also, I think this week, correct me if I'm wrong, is the week that we celebrate our crossing guards. I think that's nationally something to, for us to do, and so I wanted to say kudos to those folks, and also, we need to be able to have the city hire more of them because we have a significant number of vacancies, and these people are really the first people that see our kids every single day, and so we need them, so congratulations to them and thank them for their service.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Vice President Jones?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give kudos to Cheviot School for the recent, I believe it was Thursday, my days are mixed up, forgive me, but I believe it was Thursday, their Leadership Day. They have implemented the Leader in Me program, and it is clearly evident that these youngsters have this down pat, and they are true leaders, and I was very much impressed with their presentations, particularly the ones where they were following their own progress in subject areas, and they, they learned how to read graphs, the bar graph, so they can tell you what they're, how they're improving, and they can tell you where they're lacking and all that. I'm impressed because I'm not a data geek, so, but I was impressed by that, but they also had a wonderful program around Black History Month, and even made comments about why this day was important to them and the values that they operate on, on a day-to-day basis in both their school life and their personal life. So congratulations to the students and the staff at Cheviot School.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we can ask Mrs. Weinberg about any retirements this evening.
Yes, I think we have a few. So I would like to first start with our civil service personnel. I'm going to mention a couple of names for retirement. First up is Gloria Duke, next is John Griffin, Wally Poole, and excuse me if I'm pronouncing the names incorrectly, I'm doing my best here, Mary Margaret Cross, Bernice Riga, Donna Simpson, and Darla Williams. We just want to thank them for their service and their commitment to CPS and our students, and we wish them all the best. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are now at the point on our agenda where we're going to hear from our, I think, one and only presentation tonight, which is from Sands Montessori.
Yay. Yay.
Coming up is our principal, Ms. Sarah Lord, who will open the presentation. Welcome.
And I just wanted to say that as they're walking up, these two students, they gave us fours for the class for their school, and they did an amazing job. So it's still exciting to see both of them here today, and of course, to see you as well.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, members of the board and our district leadership team for allowing me to come and share about our wonderful school. I am Sarah Lord, and I've had the privilege of being principal at Sands Montessori for the past seven years. Sands Montessori was established in 1975 as the first public Montessori school in the nation. Because of this legacy, we have a great deal of pride in our school. When you visit Sands Montessori, you will see our mission come alive. You will notice the focus on the whole child, that we are developing learners who know how to think critically, problem solve, and have a passion to make a difference. You will notice the depth of relationships that are continually cultivated and the collaboration that exists as we learn and work together. This triangle represents the depth of relationships between our parents, our teachers, and the children. We have highly dedicated staff who care about who students become, our families who share their talents, time, and resources to enrich the learning opportunities for our students, and finally, students who enthusiastically embrace challenges and are eager to learn and grow. As a school community, we work hard and celebrate often. Next slide, please. Academics. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our classrooms are beautifully prepared, peaceful, orderly, learning- Our classrooms are beautifully prepared, peaceful, orderly, learning environments where students learn through the senses. Learning progresses from the concrete to abstract. Students learn self-discipline, focus, and respect. All children learn. Teachers observe and guide children in their academic and social emotional development. This year, our staff is very excited about the newly created Montessori scope and sequence that provides a consistent framework of standards-aligned instruction within the Montessori classroom. Student progress is monitored through observation checks and formative assessments that are used in all Montessori schools to ensure consistency and equity. Next, I would like to introduce Ms. Robin Appino, who is our library media specialist, to tell you more about our learning environment.
Thank you. Hi, thanks so much for having us. First, I wanted to tell you that I've been a member of the CPS and Sands family for 14 years. Got a senior at Walnut, an eighth grader at Walnut, and a fifth grader at Sands. So I stand here not only as a teacher, but also as a parent. And I'm just, I'm so lucky to be able to serve our entire community. So as a librarian, I get to serve not only the children, but the staff and the families. And I'm also part of a fantastic fine arts team that you got to see when you came to visit. And one of our favorite parts of the Montessori curriculum as the fine arts team is our focus on community and cultural studies. And thanks to our new Montessori scope and sequence, we are better able to collaborate and integrate real-world experiences through the fine arts. In PE, with Ms. Tebby, students learn to be healthy through dance with the Cincinnati Ballet, Mom Love Modern Dance, through sports with the NFL and the FC initiative such as Fuel Up to Play 60 and FC Cincinnati, and of course, through active play. In the visual arts classes with Ms. Aaron, students learn about artists around the world and use a variety of mediums to create pieces of art, which also show relationships across disciplines. And through the visual arts, our children can see themselves as creators who value their own ideas and respect the ideas of others. In music class, students experience music from around the world by singing and dancing and playing instruments. And in our technology class, students practice 21st century learning skills through lessons on digital citizenship, coding, 3D design, keyboarding, and digital platforms that allow them to demonstrate their learning in multiple ways. And in the library, students are exposed to a very wide range of literature created by authors and illustrators around the world. They learn 21st century information and media literacy skills, and they get to tinker and create with STEAM-related materials in the makerspace. So the whole child is at the center of all these enriching experiences, and they get many leadership opportunities through these areas. And I would like to introduce Nick Reap, who's going to talk to you about leadership opportunities at Sands.
Thank you. Sands students practice leadership in many ways. In multi-age classrooms, student leaders assist and teach other students. We set examples for others during transitions in the hallways, in the cafeteria, and on the playground. We work to bring about change in ourselves and others through the MORE program, student council, and Fuel Up to Play 60 ambassadors. And outside of school, we are coaches and mentors during Little Eagles basketball camp. Our ambassadors welcome guests to our building for specials event, for special events. We create morning announcements, help host evening events such as Family Literacy Night and STEM Night. Next, I'd like to introduce our student council, Charlotte Ridenhour.
My name is Charlotte Ridenhour. I am the student council president, speaking on the behalf of Sands-Montessori. I would like to inform you of our Sands-Montessori extracurricular activity. I, the student council creates several programs for our school community, such as the Food Drive, Spirit Week, and the yearly Eagle T-shirt Design Con. Students can participate in band, choir, and Suzuki instrumental group. We also have our sports program that is sponsored by our parent organization. Students can play soccer, basketball, and baseball. The parent organization also offers many after-school extracurricular activities, such as Spanish, dance, acting, and karate. The teachers, staff, and families are to thank for Sands students. At a caring school, community, we thrive. Thank you.
Thank you all so, so much. Do we have questions from board members? Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Lindy, and hello, Ms. Lord and everybody. It's good to see you all. As always, my questions are for the two students. I am always interested to know what student's favorite thing is about their school and why.
Well, I definitely like our interactive teachers. I definitely like our teachers, and I like, I like the specials teachers and the classes that they teach with their immersive learning.
Yeah.
I like the materials we use because it helps me understand what we're doing.
Short and sweet, I love it, to the point. Thank you all so much.
Other board member questions?
Mrs. Weinberg? Just wanted to say, good job. Don't be nervous. You did great. I just want to give them another round of applause.
Mr. Craig?
Oh.
No, I think we have a few other questions. Mr. Craig?
I just wanted to highlight, I think, one of the things that was mentioned, and I know the students mentioned it, but I think you mentioned it also, Ms. Lord, is the extracurricular activities that fulfill that whole nature of the whole kid, right? So that the entire part of the child in the educational process is needed in order for a student to be thriving and successful. And so I think really a good thing to highlight, that we're both catering to the educational, traditional parts, but also the other aspects of a child that's in the school who needs those creative aspects to help them thrive.
We are very blessed to have a strong, supportive Sands-Montessori parent organization. So they offer both the athletics, but then the after-school enrichment programs. So it's really fantastic. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. I've been charged to be the historian, and I wanted to be able to say to folks that Sands did begin downtown. And the fact that we had the first public Montessori school, and more particularly, first Montessori high school, is one of the things that makes us very, very different. And it has grown so well that really we have, as we've been talking about in policy, we actually have a Montessori system. And it is a valid, important, successful part of the district as a whole. So I commend what Sands is doing. Hope we can make as much use of that adjacent property that's at your, on your campus. I don't know who, to whom it belongs or whatever, but would love to see an expansion of more things happening on that adjacent property that runs parallel and then goes into some woods in the back.
Yes.
I think that would be great for us, particularly CPS outside. So I'm very excited that our Montessori programs continue to grow. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We, the Montessori principals and I just attended the American Montessori Society Conference in Nashville, and Ms. Blais spoke, and it was really great to be recognized among people from all over the country as kind of the flagship of Montessori. So we look forward to a Montessori adoption of curriculum, hopefully next January. So thank you for allowing us to pursue with that, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other board members? Dr. Moffett?
I just want to say, you guys rocked it. You did great. I can tell you're a little nervous, and you all have some great agriculture going on over there, too. And I think that I'm really big on agriculture in our schools right now, and it started with seeing that big monstrous thing that you guys had and learning about it and how the fruits and vegetables were there. They took us around to all their different classes. You guys are just true leaders and definitely a great examples of your school. So I'm so proud of you, and I am so, so impressed, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Vice President Jones?
Yes, I want to ask each of the students if they want to come up. Now, are both of you part of student council? Okay, the young lady, you're not part of student council? You are.
So I am the student council president.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and you are an ambassador?
I hope so.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, you give toward, hey, great. So speaking from one, in millions of years ago, I was a student council president, too, in my school at Hugh. But I wanted to ask you in particular, what made you decide to be, to become or work toward being the student council president?
Well, my dad said that I first wanted to be the vice president, and then I came to dinner one day and was like, I want to be the student council president. I'm going to go with it was a very random choice, because I don't exactly remember, but I make a bunch of random choices that work out one way or the other, but.
That's what I told this guy when we had our elections. I just made a couple of random choices. Thank you. Thank you. And then to the young man, I just, it sounds like you're kind of all around. You do lots of good things, and that, you have to be a leader in order to do that. What do you think makes you shine? Oh, great. Okay. Thank you. Great.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just add my thank you very much, both to the team and to the students. I think it's a real highlight of board meeting. Thank you. Really, truly appreciate it. Okay, we're going to keep moving. From our presentation section, we've now reached item H on board matters. And for the governance RFP, we have an update and I think a recommendation from Mr. Morosky and from Mr. Craig.
So we received three excellent submissions there for proposals from the Alma Group, the Council on Great City Schools, and the Fairview Agency. They ranged in different lengths of time, as well as different offerings for specific services. Based on our review, and again, all of these were done with, we appreciate the great amount of time that they put into it, but we looked at the Council on Great City Schools as the one that most met the needs of which we were asking for in the RFP, and that would be able to assist us in, again, growing the board's communication and development and being able to provide some unique skill sets that would be helpful in advising us. And so the recommendation that we were going to offer out is for the Council on Great City Schools. And that's a 12-month, what they offered is a 12-month contract.
Mr. Craig and Mr. Morosky, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to invite input from board members, to create the scope of work, to get it out there, to do that quickly, to get the responses back, to review them, to make a recommendation to us. Do board members have questions for Mr. Craig or Mr. Morosky? Okay, so I think, I think, I'm not, I think we should just probably have a vote on whether or not to accept that recommendation, because I would like us to move forward with one of those training plans as soon as we can. But I do want to make sure if people have questions or points they want to make, that we have a chance to do that. Treasurer Wagner?
So requisition should be entered, so the contract can then be board-approved through the treasurer's report at the next meeting.
Sure, I think we can do that, too. I think I just wanted to get clarity across the group about where, which direction we're moving. And then we can absolutely do that, I think, in the next treasurer's report. Did you have a question, Ms. Weinberg?
I was just going to say that it would have to wait till the next time we are here to vote on the treasurer, since it's requiring money. And I would just publicly say that we've been involved with the Great City, Council on Great City Schools for almost 20 years as a district, and now that the National Association of School Boards, we are no longer a member of that. Our membership with Great City Schools is even more important. My, my only concern is that, you know, of the ones that were mentioned, I still would be preferring to have, we'll get to vote on it next time, the Alma Group, largely because of the work that they did in the, in the search, but also because I think they gained a great deal of credibility with the community throughout the process, and I'm still valuing what they told us. The other thing is that we do, we are members of the Great City School Group, you know, dues of $41,000, as well as all the other expenses. And they do a great job in auditing operations and comparing operations. So it's, it's a, it's a no-lose situation choosing between those two. I just, again, would continue to prefer to work with Alma, who learned a great deal about our community, and our community learned a lot about them.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Are there other questions or points people would like to make at all? Yeah, Mr. Craig?
I also wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on what actually is being offered. I think that might be helpful for folks to know as well. And so what, particularly, one of the reasons we did, we like the Council on Great City Schools was that they were offering, again, individual coaching, so work, being able to work with individual board members on any questions, and helping us build up some tools to be able to evaluate the success of the district from our governance role. The other thing was that they were willing to do some on-site visits to provide additional training. So being able to have someone who is willing to commit themselves to coming here, being here, and providing some training, as well as doing individual coaching beyond that, was a big part of the governing role. Again, all of them offered a lot of great services, so I think it's really for us was just, which one do we think provided the best value and the best amount of services and experience in this particular role of board development, more so than some of the other roles that people have worked with school boards in the past.
That's great. Thank you very much. So I think to Treasurer Wagner's point, I think we would need to vote on the requisition, the expense in the future treasurer's report. I would like to just hear from each board member, though, whether you feel comfortable going with the recommendation from the group. I certainly do. And I would just echo what Ms. Bolton said, tough call, because we had, I personally, I think, had such a positive experience with Alma on the whole search process. And I think for some of the reasons that Mr. Craig articulated, I do think there's some genuine, particular expertise around governance from Council of Great City Schools that I'm personally very excited about. But could we, could we maybe, so we got those two, can we hear from Mrs. Weinberg and then come down?
I would agree. I would definitely go with the recommendation from the two board members for Great City Schools.
I am currently going to go with that recommendation from Board Member Morosky and Board Member Craig. I am in a course for student-centered, student-focused, student-centered governance with Council of Great City Schools, and it teaches board members how to make decisions based on student focus. I'm very impressed, and I do think it's a tough call, but I think we could definitely benefit. So I'm going to accept that recommendation.
My turn. Okay. I, I happen to have a great deal of respect for Council of Great City Schools and the work that they do and our involvement with them and all that they offer. I would have preferred to go with the Alma Group for all the things that Ms. Bolton said, that the, sort of the cred that has been developed as a part of being here, the fact that I like the way that they had mobilized around, you know, our community engagement efforts, and I saw that as of value to us in governance. I think, you know, I am willing to go with the Council of Great City Schools. The thing that's missing for me that I would like to ask for is more of the detailed information of the RFP, so that I know when we have the formal vote, what it is, what, I want to see the clear distinctions between the two.
Thank you very much. Makes a lot of sense. I think we've heard from everybody. Mr. Morosky, did you want to add anything? You may be the only one.
I do not.
Okay. We're going to write this down. Might be a first time.
I'm practicing, I'm practicing what I'm going to learn in board governance training.
Yeah, so Treasurer Wagner, is there, I know we'll vote on this in the next treasurer's report, but is there anything further you need from this group? report, but is there anything further you need from this group tonight on this? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I, can we just, I think maybe, can I ask Brandon, uh, to get Carolyn a copy of the, uh, everybody, I think, a copy of the responses?
I'll share a copy of, uh, the proposals to everyone, and then, um, also, I believe there's a little chart of data on, on the proposals as well, that we can get you all, it's like a little synopsis.
Okay.
Okay, great. So then we're moving right along to our next Board Matters items, which is brief. We had shared at a last meeting that as we go through this transition, um, between the leadership from our interim superintendent, uh, Tiana Ahmad, whom, again, we want to thank for all of her hard work and commitment to this district and its kids and its families, uh, into our next superintendent, uh, starting on May 2nd, uh, just that we would keep the public and the organization updated on how the transition is going. Um, so my updates tonight are very brief, but I wanted to share that the new superintendent has been taking some early meetings with senior staff members within the district, trying to learn as much context as she can, so she hits the ground running. Uh, we have been negotiating a final contract, which we're very excited to vote on and move forward this evening. Uh, and, um, we had, uh, the new superintendent in town, uh, a little over a week ago, um, for a very strong, um, first set of meetings, uh, both with external stakeholders and with internal staff. So we're excited to move things forward. Uh, want to thank everyone for their help in this process, and just ask, is there anything I'm missing that other board members want to make sure? Yeah, Ms. Bolton, you want to?
Yeah, I would just add as Finance Chair, that our treasurer's been, uh, working, uh, with the incoming superintendent and helping in that transition and onboarding her on the financial matters. Uh, a budget that the community knows has to be, uh, passed before June 30th, so it's, uh, hit the ground running, appreciate the treasurer working through that, and appreciate the superintendent working in the transition with the incoming superintendent as well.
And I'll just close again, I, I will do this many times, I imagine, but thanking our interim superintendent, and really being our decision maker until, uh, the new superintendent arrives, and thank you for all of that work, uh, and we're excited, um, to move forward together. Um, okay, so we're going to move then from Board Matters into Resolutions. We have a, uh, resolution which we added at the beginning of this meeting. I think, do board members all have a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay. I might ask, um, as we introduce this, um, I want to share a couple of remarks, but then, um, we'll get a motion in a second, uh, and I might just not write the second, but in a minute, ask Mr. Morosky to read a first paragraph, and then come down, each of us reading a paragraph till we've read the whole thing. Um, so, this is a resolution approving a contract of employment for Superintendent Irenetta Wright. Uh, we are incredibly excited to take this important next step for our district. Uh, Ms. Wright's first day will be May 2nd, and we know she's going to hit the ground running. Uh, we had a terrific welcome event a little over a week ago, and we're ready to move forward on the important academic and social emotional issues that matter for our students. In terms of compensation, we believe we've offered a fair and competitive package for a competitive national candidate, and the total compensation is in line with other urban Ohio districts. I know I'm personally excited for what's next for CPS under Mrs. Wright's leadership, uh, and I just want to mention that she's one of our viewers tonight, uh, watching this meeting, uh, from the great city of Detroit. So I think, um, would someone like to inter, to introduce this motion?
Would like to motion?
We have a motion from Ms. Bolton, uh, we'll read it in a second. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Morosky. Can you start then, uh, Mr. Morosky, by reading that first paragraph, and we'll come down?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving a contract of employment for Superintendent Irenetta Wright. Whereas on February 28th, 2022, the Board of Education unanimously resolved to appoint Irenetta Wright as the Superintendent of the Cincinnati City School District, and...
Whereas also on February 28th, 2022, the Board stated its intention to offer a contract of employment to Ms. Wright, with the terms to be negotiated, and...
Whereas the terms of an employment contract have been finalized.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Board President and the Treasurer CFO to execute a contract of employment with Irenetta Wright with an initial three-year term, starting on May 2nd, 2022, and ending on July 31st, 2025, and a salary of $260,000. So we have a motion that has been properly introduced and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Uh, Treasure Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Thank you very much. So back to our regularly scheduled programming, we're going to move on to resolution labeled one on the agenda, and that's going to be about approving students eligible for a subsidy reimbursement of lieu and transportation, uh, from Dr. Moffett.
I submit the resolution to approve student eligibility for a subsidy as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We have a next, um, resolution here that is a, uh, alcohol waiver, um, and I don't have a particular board member who is going to propose it, so I will propose it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to ask, can we just get like a voice, a quick voiceover from, uh, your, whichever committee or the administration, just on what this is, and...
So it is, uh, common that the community wants to use our awesome school buildings, um, thanks to taxpayers, uh, helping make them awesome over the course of number of years, particularly during Facilities Master Plan, and, uh, when they do that, sometimes they want to serve booze. As such, they have to bring it before the Policy Committee that I chair to get approval. We bring it to the board and say, okay, this is just for beer and wine, and this, uh, while an unruly rowdy bunch, the chamber orchestra crowd, um, we thought that we should say they can have alcohol at their event at SCPA.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any questions? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Third, um, we have a resolution recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday for Cincinnati Public Schools. Uh, is there anybody who would like to formally motion this one?
No moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. President Jones? Any discussion?
I would like to say that, um, I've said this in the Policy Committee, I'm making this known publicly, there are two very important things that happen on June 19th. Of course, 1865, it's very clearly written, but that's also my birthday. So now we have resolved, and now we know that Dr. Moffett's birthday is June 19th. It is a, I'm asking for it to be a holiday. Everybody is now aware that this is an important day.
Uh, any other discussion or questions? Anyone else have a birthday we missed? Okay, Treasure Wagner?
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Who did the second?
Mr. Morosky motioned, and Vice President Jones second.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Number four, uh, Mr. Morosky, would you introduce, please?
I gotta get the revised agenda then, which I don't have on me. I only had two resolutions.
Let's see, I've been known to look at the wrong one, but I think I've got the right one this time. This was on, um, a resolution amending board policy 0160, bylaws and meetings?
Yeah, um, I'm proud to, um, present a resolution amending board policy 0160, um, which would amend our bylaws, um, regarding meetings and protocol for, uh, hearing of the public, um, which we now have in person and virtually. I present, the resolution is written.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Number five will come from Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. I have a, uh, resolution amending board policy 5322, COVID-19 vaccine requirements for employees. I submit and hope for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would it be possible to get a voiceover, just for the people watching, of what this changes?
Go for it. The transportation?
Uh, we are adjusting the existing, um, policy for the requirement for vaccines, and also more particularly for testing, uh, regularly, uh, and what the administration has brought to us, and I want to congratulate, um, Dr. Moffett for bringing the issue to us in policy, uh, but administration came back with a, I think, a, a fair and safe, uh, kind of incremental approach to this, which is like the masking policy that we adjusted, we are adjusting the requirement regarding testing, um, for, um, those folks that cannot or will not necessarily get the vaccine. And so as we are in safe, uh, waters, so to speak, uh, within our locality, we will, just like the masking, uh, we will not be requiring the, uh, the testing at the same rate that we once did, and if indeed the change happens environmentally, um, we will go back to, um, requiring those sorts of things. But it is true that new board, uh, new, uh, employees will continue to be required to get the vaccine.
And if they, yeah, and if they don't, they'll go, so you'll go on a, like a list, if you cannot or will not, and if things take a downturn again, then folks on that list would then have to resume the weekly testing and the impetus for this, and again, to echo Member Bolton, thanks to Member, uh, Dr. Moffett for bringing this, and the administration, uh, universally supports this change as well. Part of the reason was, um, yes, uh, you know, it adds a lot to the employee, but it takes a lot of time to track all of this. Our, our staff at this, and I just think this needs to be mentioned, and I'll be quiet, but our staff has taken this extraordinarily seriously, and has tracked down every person. And so you have employees get the test, then the staff has to find the people that didn't, and then remind them to take it, and it takes a lot of time, and we didn't hire extra people to do that work. And so I think the number, and Ms. Bunch, you can give me an up or down or whatever, but I, Mr. Hoying, our General Counsel, was saying, I think there was like one employee who had tested, uh, positive for COVID in like a couple of weeks, and because of the DAS, so it was like, you know, at this point, unless we get back up, and then we'll start it again.
That's right, I really appreciate that. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Yeah, Mrs. Weinberg?
I do have a question. Um, I know that we're stating the information today, and how is that being communicated out to current, um, teachers and cur, excuse me, current employers, employees? Do we know how that is being discussed?
So in preparation for this discussion and possible vote tonight, we have emails slated to go out to our employees that with our 534, um, weekly tester compliments, letting them know of the decision and then what will happen going forward. Their names, as Mr. Morosky indicated, will be kept on a list, so that heaven forbid we get back into a situation where numbers increase, that we can resume the policy.
And will that email be going out?
Um, once you all tell us that this is effective.
Thank you.
Sounds pretty reasonable. Um, okay, I'm Ms. Wagner.
Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Craig? Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Uh, we're on number six here, which is, uh, from Dr. Moffett.
I submit, um, resolution 8600.01, supervision of transported students. I submit it as written.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. And our last one for this evening, from Mr. Morosky, number seven. Uh, so this is on the transportation of district contracted vans?
Yeah. I'll present a resolution amending board policy 8650, uh, transportation by district contracted vans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, we've now reached the report of the superintendent. I'll turn it over to, uh, interim superintendent Tiana Ahmad.
Yes. It is a pleasure to start and open with Taft High School wins Division III state championship. The Senators beat Cleveland Heights, Lutheran East yesterday at the University of Dayton Arena. Thank you to Cincinnati for all of your support. It was a big turnout and a big celebration, and congratulations to the coaches, the school, and of course, our basketball players. Congratulations, this is awesome. TA?
D.
TA?
M-T.
TA?
M-T.
So some more basketball highlights. Um, you are invited to join us for the All-Star Basketball Showcase, March 26th, hosted at UC. The event will begin at noon at UC's Fifth Third Arena. The day's activities will include CPS Boys and Girls All-Star Basketball Games, individual skill competitions, and a college and career fair. Tickets are available online. Also, congratulations to Paul McMillan IV of Woodward High School, who has been named 2021/2022 Gatorade Ohio Boys Basketball Player of the Year. This is huge. The award recognizes athletic excellence and academic achievement. He is now a finalist for the National Boys Basketball Player of the Year Award. Walnut Hills Robotics Team heading to the World Championships. Team members learn to think like engineers by designing, building, and coding robots to, to compete against other teams. Walnut Hills is one of two Ohio teams advancing to the World Championship in April. Here's a little safety reminder, as the weather improves and we gain hours of daylight, we would like to remind our high school families and students to be picked up on time to catch Metro immediately after school, um, for after-school dismissal. This is for the safety of all our students, and thank you for adhering to our process. Leap Academy opens up a new library, 2,000 books in this newly established library. Two Cincinnati teams raised over $15,000 so they can purchase the books through Manatee Literacy Project. The 400 students at Leap Academy now have diverse array of fiction and nonfiction titles, thanks to the determination of Ava attending Walnut, uh, Wyoming High School, and Jaya, a student at Mercy McCully High School. Our BAC, our Business Advisory Council, was awarded, um, and recognized by the Ohio Department of Education in Leadership Awards. Congratulations to the CPS Business Advisory Council for this outstanding achievement. Just a reminder, March 24th, we have our Vaccine and Booster Clinic, Witten Hills Academy. Walk-ins are welcome, and if you want more information, you can go to our website. Spring break is coming up. Distribution for families during spring break, there will be distribution of produce, health and hygiene products during spring break, the week of March 28th, from noon to 2:00 PM, on Monday, Monday and Thursday at the following schools, Rees &amp; Price, Rockdale, South Amundale. For more information, you can go to our website. And lastly, I want to remind people of some important dates. Course exams are Mar- March 21st through the 25th. Our Basketball All-Star Showcase is March 26th, and spring break, March 28th through April 1st. That concludes my recommendations, my, um, superintendent report along with the written report for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Interim Superintendent Amat. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the recommendations from the superintendent?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Treasure Wagner?
Bolton? I on everything except the Civil Service, uh, section, uh, on page nine for letter G.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes on everything, no on letter G.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Uh, do we have a motion to adopt the report of the treasurer?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, uh, do we have any inquiries and updates? I know I have one that I'd like to ask. Um, go ahead, Mr. Morosky.
I just have an update, um, as, uh, this district's appointee to the Cincinnati Recreation, uh, Commission Board. Again, thank you for that. It's been a really, uh, neat board to sit on, learning a lot, and we're doing a lot. Um, I'll be sitting, uh, unsurprisingly perhaps, on their policy committee and working with, um, Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Getz on formalizing the agreement between the district and the Rec Commission. So those are largely probably my updates, TO, going forward, asking for advice and feedback. Um, and then also just something interesting, I think, uh, Cincinnati Rec Commission, uh, currently has 11 capital projects, uh, going on around the city, which of course will ultimately benefit our families. So those are the two big updates from our last commission, commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Um, Vice President Jones?
Yes. Um, this probably could have been done in kudos, but I didn't want it to go, um, without acknowledgement. Um, you know, every year we do our table of organization, and we list, everybody expresses interest in their different, you know, preferences for committees. And, um, we recently, we were recently, back in January, it didn't happen, but we recently learned that, uh, two of our newest board members have been accepted. They were offered the opportunity to serve on two very prestigious committees. So I wanted to bring that up as an update instead of, and it could be an update and a kudos, but want to congratulate board member, um, Moffett for her appointment as, uh, as part of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee with the, um, OSBA, and also to acknowledge the appointment of, uh, Member Weinberg to the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Jones. Um, it's, I have a, this is not an update, it's an inquiry. Um, and I wanted to ask a question to either Ms. Bunty or to, to Ms. Amat about, and it's a COVID question. Um, I, I keep seeing some of these articles and, um, about, like, another wave that's hitting Europe. Uh, and I think one thing I'm, I'm committed to, and I think we're all committed to, is making sure we stay ahead of what is the next challenge or curveball that COVID is gonna throw at us. Um, and so I just, I, I know very little to nothing, except what I read in the short New York Times articles. And just wanted to ask, you know, what is this thing? How worried about it should we be or shouldn't we be? Um, how are you all thinking about what's next?
So I had the opportunity to talk with our good friends at the Health Department today about this very topic. And what they explained to me is that what's happening in the UK came very, very quickly. They did see a rise in overall cases, but it's also falling equally as quickly. They compared it to Alpha, which honestly, I had to go back in time to remember Alpha with all the various COVID, um, variants that we've had. But what they also shared with me was a bit of good news, if you will. And the doctor said that if we've been vaccinated or previously infected along with the warmer weather that we are currently entering and with spring, that this would provide some protective effects overall for our community. And so they're not anticipating that this will be another surge like Omicron. Um, no one has a crystal ball, but based on what they're anticipating, that they don't believe that, um, that will occur. So I also asked, um, is there anything that we can do to mitigate in case that this would occur again? And he said, continue with the vaccination clinics, which you all know we've been incredibly committed to, hosting a minimum of two a month for the last, um, over a year, um, over a year now. And in addition, making sure that we're closely monitoring the data on a daily basis, watching for shifts. We still continue our partnership with Children's Hospital and with the Health Department and meet on a weekly basis, and we'll continue to do so for the foreseeable future. But the data is monitored on a daily basis. And then finally, to make sure that we are ready at a moment's notice to shift back into more aggressive protocols if that is, um, needed or required.
I think that's great. And just as, as we think about questions we might get from, from public, that, um, no risk of, of needing to, to not be in person anymore, like, that this is a much lower, lower level of concern than Omicron was, and you all feel like we're ready and have good plans in place.
Yes.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Moffett?
I do have a question. Um, Susan, don't go anywhere. So can you explain the process if students get sent home because they're not feeling good and they have a need for, there's a requirement for a COVID test to return? I'm getting a lot of questions, and I'm not, I think that there's not been consistency, and I'm also confused on when do students need a COVID test to return? Um, is it, what is that? What is the process, the true protocol?
So this is a difficult time of year for COVID testing because of seasonal allergies. So I, like so many others in this region, have allergies, and, um, so do many of our littler ones. And so right now, when students have symptoms that often can either be allergies or COVID symptoms, they're incredibly similar. They're being asked to take a test in order to return to school to rule that out. So that is what is occurring, um, oftentimes, particularly we see it in spring and fall because the symptoms mimic. Um, in the last conversation that we had with our health partners, they're taking a look at some of those symptoms in terms of thinking about them as a bundle. So is it more than just, um, runny nose and headache? Are there other kinds of components too, to be able to tease that out? Um, and many students have talked with their doctors about saying this is a case of seasonal allergies or something like that, but this is a hard time of year.
So how do we stop, don't go anywhere, so how do we stop? I need your expertise. Um, if, if families know that this is a concern, that this is an allergy, like, you know, we go through this every year, they're on some medicine or it's asthma, are we still requiring them to have to get tested, the COVID tested multiple times? Or is there something that families can do so that their kids aren't missing school multiple days?
So a lot of times that school nurse will communicate with the child's doctor along with the family. So, um, if there are individual cases, I'd be happy to work with those families.
And I just have a quick question as well. Um, what if they are being told by their, by their physician, the family physician, that they're not going to test them due to they don't have symptoms of COVID?
We've also encountered that over the last few weeks because many, um, as the numbers of COVID decrease in our community, so do the numbers of testing sites and the numbers of providers and also the number of tests. So again, if there's individual cases, I'm happy to work with that. Our nurses and our schools are still offering testing at the school sites so as not to inconvenience families, and we still do have tests.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any last inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
I have a, a real update based upon what I said incorrectly at the beginning of the meeting, which was that the, uh, tour, uh, is at, uh, not at Gamble Montessori High School, but instead Gamble Montessori Elementary. So that's the update, uh, fresh, fresh during the meeting, an update. Uh, the, the other thing, uh, if I could, I have a, uh, an inquiry of two, two areas really, but I'll focus just on the one. Leap Academy, which is now opening a wonderful, uh, library. I know that they're, uh, growing, and I also know that, um, they are in, they are in need of space. And I don't know that this, it's not really rises to the level of assignment or anything like that, but definitely, um, can we, can we be thinking about what that means for that school to expand? It's a magnet. There is space. Uh, and they are in a position of saying we can end, uh, the, um, uh, what shall we say? End the enrollment or cut the enrollment off. But, uh, after the job fair, I went over to, to the Leap Academy and drove around in the neighborhood and what have you, even though it's a magnet. And I just think, uh, I, I'd really like an update as to their space issues that they have and, and what we can possibly do. I know we've been doing some stuff, and I, I know Mr. Messer was a, a champion for expanding, uh, and, and, and getting things, uh, in, in proper order over there as a facility. So just, um, it's not an assignment, but I, I am making an inquiry about the situation at Leap.
Okay, thanks very much. Any assignments before we adjourn? Vice President Jones?
Yeah, I'm still in the Taft mode, the Taft spirit. And I, I don't know if it's a legitimate assignment, and it really is bigger than Taft, but it would be great, and maybe this is something that's already in the works. Um, we are a school of champions. And I would, yeah, and I would like, I would like to be able to offer personal acknowledgement from, from the board to the champions in our district. And it, I'm reminded not only of Taft, but the young, the player at, who is achieving. Yes, uh, McMillan, that's his name. And we have the, the lady, we have the swimmer, and we have the, um, girl, the female who won the state wrestling and all of that. If we could just have a, a day, I wanna, is that an assignment? Is that a legitimate assignment where we could do some resolutions or something, present it to them? I would, I think that would be a great opportunity. It doesn't even have to all be in sports. We have champions of all types. The Brain Bowl had some champions, I'm just saying. The Brain Bowl had some champions, whichever team won, do it.
Wonderful.
Might be a long board meeting, but.
I think, but I think, I think putting students in the middle and honoring the, the champions we have is wonderful. Um, any last assignments before we adjourn?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
If it would please the, uh, the board, I'd like to, uh, ask or assign to the treasurer a possibility of kind of a review regarding contracts as we approach the budget piece as to both the school, and I'm talking personnel contracts. I'm talking vendor and company contracts, both at the school level and at the district level to, to see where we are, because I know we're gonna need to come up with some money, and we're gonna need to also make sure that we're getting the results that we need. So that would be one. And also, i- in this, in this, um, transition period too, uh, to investigate, and I think it should be the treasurer, uh, but I'm not sure, um, to kind of investigate, and I've mentioned this to, uh, President Lindy, I think, uh, and General Counsel, if there's any service that the, uh, Hamilton County Education Service Center, where we have multiple contracts in the millions, frankly, if they have any professional services that they might be able to offer us during this transition, uh, as we go and more particularly in the very early stages of the incoming superintendent. I don't even know if they offer that kinda service, but I think it might be good to have some sort of, I don't know, third party, maybe not advising, but at least helping facilitate. Just to look into it, I don't, you know, not to necessarily do it.
What I hear you saying is we should learn what's out there, not we should go do X or Y or Z.
Learn what's out there.
I think so long as it's learning, that's great with me.
Great.
I, I don't feel comfortable advocating one thing or another.
Not at all, neither yet, either. But those would be my two. Let me say one more thing, though, about Taft. This is an inquiry thing. We were moved greatly when we had to do the, uh, FC, uh, stadium and learn so much of the history. When Taft was created, it was the only one of our high schools that was predominantly African-American. And it, and it holds that proud tradition, and they testified to it. But being a home of champions, like the whole district is, uh, there was talk, and, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, gets struck from a budget or whatever, of actually housing our athletic, our district athletic Hall of Fame.
Of what?
At Star, uh, the District Athletic Hall of Fame at Stargill Stadium in the building. And I think, you know, tonight with Sands coming in, there was even talk about celebrating all the educational firsts that happened in the downtown West End area, where, you know, the Sands School would be one and a number of other things that were the first, uh, first, uh, certain elementary schools or what have you. I just think it might be not, uh, a bad idea to think about, again, how's thinking about developing Stargill into sort of a, a additional sort of museum piece for our remarkable athletic heritage in Cincinnati Public, historic athletic heritage. So maybe we can just kind of think about that.
Sounds like a wonderful, important topic for a future board meeting.
Yep.
Um, any other last call on assignments? Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.